Good evening.
Good evening.
I call this special session to order. This is a special session of the Mayor and Council of City of Bisbee, County of Cochise, State of Arizona. It's being held on Tuesday, October 4th, 2022 at 5:35 PM in city council chambers. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Juanetta Hill.
Right.
Councilmember Joni Giacchino.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Davis is excused. Mayor Ken Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Jones, not here yet. Councilmember Mel Suave.
Here.
Mayor Protem Anna Klein.
Here.
City staff, Stephen Hawken, City Manager, Ashley Coronado, City Clerk, Tim Cox, Police Chief, Melissa Hartman, City Planner, Jo Estes, City Attorney.
Thank you, everybody. We'll just move right on into our agenda item number one, and this is a presentation by Ree Butler of the CBC Financial Corporation on a bid proposal submitted on the Hillcrest building. I'm going to let City Manager Hawken introduce and say a couple of words.
Okay, thank you, everyone, and good evening. This has been a long haul, as all of you know. Since we first got associated with the Hillcrest building, there have been a couple of rounds of proposals made to purchase the building in various and sundry different fashions for the benefit of the most recent developments. The agenda states that there will be an item number two presentation by Mr. Mark Gray. Mr. Gray has withdrawn his proposal, so he is no longer under consideration. Almost simultaneously to that event, Melissa received a phone call from the La Frontera Group indicating that they would like to talk to us about their bid. As you will recall, they were unsuccessful last June in receiving the tax credits necessary to make their plan work, but the lawyers did negotiate an agreement which we are still under with La Frontera that doesn't necessarily give them any advantage whatsoever, but I think after we get done chatting with Mr. Butler this evening, that it's something that we probably want to go over. I am not recommending unless you choose to do otherwise. I'm not recommending that we take any action tonight because I think there might be more to digest than we thought after it's over. So, and I don't want to try and hasten a decision, and if a decision needs to be made between now and the next council meeting, then we'll call a special meeting to do that. So, anyway, Mr. Ree Butler is here. He and his partner, I guess, Jim Danaher, are operating a company that does similar work around the country. And so they had sent us an interesting proposal, and Melissa and I have had two occasions at this point to chat on the strengths of their proposal. And so Mr. Butler is here tonight for the purpose of making a presentation to you on his proposal, and we'll be more than happy to have any conversation you wish for at the appropriate time. So Ree, if you want to go ahead.
Yes. Thank you. Let me just say, I know you're nothing new to this, but sometimes cities grind along at their pace, but we are very appreciative that you've taken the time to come in and taken a look at this project, and we're glad to hear what you've got for us. And, you know, the decision won't be tonight, but I don't think that's, you know, I'm hoping you understand that's the way we, cities roll for the most part, so.
So, thank you for the overview, Mayor. Again, we've been through lots of public procurement processes and understand that everybody needs to be heard when you have a public asset. We're very comfortable with that approach.
Thank you.
So again, my name is Ree Butler. I'm the owner of Butler Housing Company. My wife is here, Sean Leach. She's the co-owner of Butler Housing Company. I have been in the housing business in Phoenix for about 40 years, in Arizona, I should say, for about 40 years. Grew up in Phoenix, went off to law school, college, all that, but came back and began building apartments in the early 80s. We used to own the largest apartment company in the state of Arizona. We sold that company in 1997 to the largest apartment company in the world, and I've had my own company, and we've had our own company now for about 25 years. The affordable housing, and my business partner, Jim Danaher, as the City Manager mentioned, he and I have been working together since about the year 2000, so we've got 22 years working together. And as you'll see in the packet, we'll go over in just a minute, we've done four projects together involving historic buildings very much like Hillcrest. But just really quickly on this program, and you may have gone through some of this before, but in our experience, in my experience, the best way to build affordable housing is using this low-income housing tax credit program. The best way to redevelop historic buildings is combining this program with a historic building. Now, what we have found, when you actually convert a historic building into housing, although this has been housing at various times, this particular building, Hillcrest, they're great places to live, and that's fundamentally why we like to work on historic buildings. They end up being great places to live. They end up having an awful lot of their own character that you cannot replicate with new construction, although we do both, new construction and adaptive reuse redevelopment. The process to obtain this financing is super highly competitive. I think you've already been through some of that on past applications. I'm here to tell you that sometimes it does take a few years to get through these kind of projects. One of the projects that Jim Danaher and Sean and I worked on, and I told this to your City Manager and to Melissa, took us 10 years to get the financing. That's not, I'm not necessarily saying that's a great thing to talk about, but we started that project in the year 2002, and we finally obtained financing for that in the year 2012. That's in your packet. That's a project called Garfield Commons. We have fun with these buildings when we look at what they used to be, and so in your packet, this is what Garfield Commons used to be in 1960. One of the interesting stories about Garfield Commons, which was called the Little Sisters Before, Home for the Ageed, we designated a historic building in 2010 when it turned 50, and according to SHPO, that made it the youngest historic building in the state of Arizona when it turned 50. We always thought that was kind of fun. But again, we tried about five different times to get the financing for Garfield Commons. What finally allowed it to be approved is we agreed to build it, I'm sorry, to create housing for very low-income veterans. And so that project today, which we redeveloped in the year 2012, 2013, 14, now has 100 apartments for very low-income veterans. It's full all the time. The average rents there are under $600 a month, which in downtown Phoenix is about half to a third of the market rate rents. And the men and women who live there, it's a great place for them to live, but that's Garfield Commons. The reason I mention that one first, the financing for that project is exactly what we're talking about for Hillcrest. It's a combination of low-income housing tax credits and historic preservation tax credits. Another interesting sidebar on that project, the investor in that project is Berkshire Hathaway. So, one of the largest companies in the world is the investor in that project. The reason I mention that is these projects, once they get financed and actually get open, they tend to be extremely well-capitalized for the long term, so they work. I guess that's the way to put it. Hillcrest, which she said she created the rainbow, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, Melissa, that might have been a photo shop.
Might have been.
I'm not trying, I guess I did put you on the spot.
You did put in. Yes, I did do it.
You have a beautiful black and white picture of the building. It's a really excellent building. Other buildings that we have redeveloped, this building is in your packet. This is in a small town called Fort Dodge, Iowa. This is about an eight or nine-story building that we converted into affordable housing for seniors about seven or eight years ago, and we still own that with our partners up in Iowa. Another building in the packet is called Loudon Lofts. Used to be Loudon Machinery, and these buildings are all about 100 years old, plus or minus, so they were built to last, but they need to be modernized. And when I say modernized, all of these buildings that we're showing you were completely updated, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, anything you could imagine to make it into a modern version of the historic building, that's what gets done. A key piece, we talked a little bit to your staff about, always is the windows. When we do affordable housing, it's important the windows become energy efficient to benefit the residents, right? So, the whole idea in this program, which is odd for most developments, our goal is to drive the rents down. Our goal is not to drive the rents up. Again, we own market-rate apartments. On those projects, we push the rents, but on these projects, the goal is to push the rents down. If we also have energy-efficient windows, it helps push utility goals down. As you know, families in this income range, these are families that have household income of between $20,000 and $40,000 a year, every piece of the family budget matters, right? So, housing costs, utility costs, healthcare costs, education costs, everything matters. So, we talked a little bit about Garfield Commons, Little Sisters of the Poor, Home for the Ageed. Of course, I think that's a cute name because it was actually originally built, Garfield Commons, by an order of nuns from France, who, Little Sisters of the Poor, originally built this building in 1960, and then ultimately it got into financial trouble, and my partner, Jim Danaher, bought the building. The last property to talk about in the packet is called Roosevelt Commons. Roosevelt Commons is 48 apartments in downtown Phoenix. This project is a little bit different. This one, half the apartments are in historic buildings. Is it warm or is it just me? It's a little warm.
Yes.
Sorry. So, this project has 48 apartments, half in the historic buildings, half in new construction. So, here we actually combine new construction with the historic buildings, and that's actually been an award-winning project. One final point, and then we can talk a little bit more about the financing. We have brought a nonprofit service provider into this project, which is the Greater Phoenix Urban League. Again, their information is in your packet. What they do is they bring services to the residents, the families, that we as a developer don't do. We're just not good at being service providers. We're here to provide housing, the highest calling we can, at the lowest rents that we can achieve. It's just such an odd formula to say it that way. But the Urban League comes in and provides additional services to the families. That might be after-school care, it might be financial counseling, it might be other kinds of money management, it might be career counseling. One of the programs they have, thank you, Steve, is to prepare residents to be able to go buy a home. So, in our program, we actually like it when our residents move out because we do that as being a success story. They can live with us for five years, eight years, 10 years, and get credit counseling from the Urban League, and after five to 10 years, they're ready to go take on homeownership. Again, we think that's a success story. So, the Urban League will be our partner in this project. You have a copy of our proposal at the very last page of the packet. You may have already, I don't know if you've had that reviewed at all with the Council, Seede or Melissa?
Not formally.
But again, one of the things I think I need to point out, we've proposed a combination at a price of $700,000. It's a combination of a cash portion of the price and then a carryback portion of the price. And to clarify why we've done that, these projects are all about scoring points to win. Again, I don't know how much of this you've been through on prior projects, but it's a scale of about a 200-point scale, and you want to get as close to 200 points as you can, and that's how you win. We just had a project awarded in Phoenix in June of this year that scored 185 points. It was the second highest score. It's an objective scoring process to compete. If you have local government financing, you're $250,000, you get points for that. It's about a five-point category, and what we've learned over the last 20 years, every single scoring category matters because once you submit, and the procurement deadlines for that are April 3rd of next year, once you submit, it's all about the points. There's no politics, there's no lobbying, there's no pressure campaigns. At that point, the procurement at the state level is all about the points. And so objectively, when they rank the scores, the highest scores win. That's just how it's done. There are some particular needs for rural projects to really pay attention to the points. It's interesting, there didn't, used to be a lot of rural applications. There used to only be one or two a year. Now, there are eight to 10 a year. It's much more competitive in the rural categories. Part of the reason for that, there is now a state tax credit in the state of Arizona, a state tax credit for affordable housing. I'm the past Chair of the Arizona Multi-Housing Association. We worked with the Legislature and the Governor for four years to get the state tax credit approved. It's now available. It's particularly important for rural projects to make sure there's enough funding to do a high-quality project. So, those are the points I wanted to cover. We like working with buildings like this, and we like working in smaller communities. The experience we've had in smaller communities is projects like this have a really high impact on the communities they're in. They're not big projects. This is only 33 apartments. It doesn't solve all the needs for affordable housing in the Bisbee region, but the people who live here, to me, will see their lives transformed. They'll have an excellent apartment to live in, the rents will be four, or five, $600 a month, those kind of rents, maybe a little higher. And so what ends up happening, our residents typically live here for a long time. We had one family, Sean and I had, in Phoenix, that moved into an apartment in 2004. They lived there for 10 years, and they watched their kids go to school. It was a great story. And the father in that couple told me once, this was the best place they ever lived. And when he was telling me this, he was telling me this with a lot of pride. So, we're happy to be here. We look forward to your ultimate decision. We understand it's a competition, and you've got a choice to make, but we are really, really happy to be competing for this and look forward to doing a really good job here to answer any questions.
Thank you. So, one of the projects you mentioned was the fact of new and old. Would you ever think of building new to expand on the 30-some-odd units? Would that be something down the road you would be interested in?
Absolutely. There actually is a priority for phased projects, so this would, we would characterize this as a first phase and leave room for a second phase. And a second, they don't get financed at the same time. There can be a gap of a few years, but phased projects are highly encouraged by the state.
Because there is room up there to do some, I think, as you know, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's a plus, I think, for us to provide more, as you said, than we need.
Sometimes, Mayor, what we do is think of it, so on the first project, we'll learn about what might be missing. So, as an example, do we need to add four-bedroom apartments? It's pretty unusual to have four-bedroom affordable apartments, but that might be what this project needs in a future phase for a larger family.
Right. My other question on the, what I kind of gleaned from what happened to us before is this whole point system, which I know is pretty competitive, there's some, seems like there was something that, there was some federal credits that they, that another project got that we didn't get on the, well, let's be honest, La Frontera didn't, that put us at a lower score. Do you know anything about these federal points that come in on this 200-point scale? Is there, do you have any of those?
Well, we know how to score high. It's, I'll give you an example. You get points if you're in a community revitalization area. That's one of the areas that's a little bit gray, right? In other projects we've had, we know how to get those points. In Bisbee, we would need to make sure we're getting those points, and if it's not black and white right now, we'd need to work with the city between now and April 3rd to make sure it's black and white. That's one area. Another area that we feel comfortable about is this historic preservation area. You get five points for agreeing that the building is eligible with SHPO for it to be a true historic project. That's something we're very comfortable doing, and not every developer's comfortable doing that, Mayor. That's a five-point category. The federal tax credits, the piece that maybe you're talking about, there's, it's beneficial if you have both federal tax credits and state tax credits, and they're both competitive. So, you have to outscore the competition to get both sets of credits. So, it may be that the prior project didn't have enough to get both sets of credits, and if you don't get the state tax credits, your project doesn't have enough sources of funds, and you fail.
And I can.
I don't know if that's what happened, but.
I can go a little bit further if you don't mind. There, and I don't want to get too far in the weeds. There's a document called a QAP, which is a Qualified Application Plan that is put together by the Legislature to help them make these decisions. The QAP had quite a few revisions last year. You can probably relate to that, and I believe that our bidder, La Frontera, did not catch all of the revisions and lost points by not doing everything that was dictated in the QAP.
So, to pick up on Melissa's point, the 2021 QAP only had 105 points as a max, actually 104 points as a max. The 2021 QAP.
200?
I'm sorry, the 2022 QAP had 200. Now, again, our industry, you're allowed to make policy recommendations while the QAP is being created. Once you submit for procurement, nothing changes, but up until the QAP is issued, you're allowed to make policy recommendations. Our industry, the Multi-Housing Association, recommended we go back to this 200-point category so you could have more choices as a developer. For an example, some developers like to do green building per lead. Other developers like to do green building per enterprise standards. Others use the National Association of Home Building. You have choices to make, but those choices result in different point levels, right? So, we like the idea as an industry of having more choices and having a higher score so you have more differentiation. In 2021, before the QAP change, there were 20 tie scores. There were 20 tie scores. Out of 30 applications, there were 20 tie scores. So, you had a tiebreaker that was based upon how few tax credits you used. It was super complicated. So, part of our position as an industry is let's not have 20 tie scores, let's have a much broader range of scoring. It's a long answer to a super technical process.
Obviously, the more points is available, the bigger spread you can have.
That's our, that was our industry's position, Mayor, and that's what the ADOH put in the QAP, and that's what Governor Deuce has signed.
Well, I may have more questions, but I'm going to open it up to my illustrious Council approval.
I have. Could you please, of course, I would like you to go through the financial here, the, because I have a couple of questions on those, and the reason is because I went through the proposal. There was some dates confusion, and one line in the financial says about asking you $200,000, and the rest you'll be making in installment, of a monthly installment, if you go detail into the proposal. But can you go through with the purchase price, the circulate apartments proposal, the $700,000 deposit, and then can you explain those lines for us?
You bet. So, it's the last page in my handout.
Yes, yes, yes.
Everybody has the last page in my handout. It's got a schedule just like that. So, the purchase price for the property would be $700,000. The earnest money deposit is $10,000 as we open an escrow. There'd be an escrow for the purchase of the property that would start with $10,000 of fundable earnest money. That process could be completed in November or December or so, depending upon when the city makes a decision, working with the City Attorney, there could be an escrow opened in the next two months, let's just say, November, probably. What then happens for the next four months to April 3rd, we put all the pieces together in this application. This ends up being about a $15 million project. Ends up being about a $15 million project. So, when we actually, we submit the application April 3rd, ADOH, the Arizona Department of Housing, is really good about making decisions by June. They're really good about hitting those dates. So, in June, you've got about 30 applications, you've only got enough funding for about 15 projects. So, in June, you'll learn if you got an award or not.
Just on this one? So, if you don't get the award, then what happens?
Well, in other projects, we've come back and applied again in.
Okay, I just want clarity on those. Okay.
It's, there is an appeal process. It's really not the right way to manage these projects. ADOH does a good job of auditing your applications. I mean, in the last 20 years, have I ever seen ADOH make a mistake twice? And so you can appeal, but the appeals don't seem to be the way to go. So, really, the focus is on April 3rd and putting together the best application you can. These applications end up being 1,500 pages of information. You have a lot of different details that go in. You have to have all your financing commitments available, I mean, all the other financing commitments. Then what happens, let's say we get an award June 1st, then for the next five or six months, we're spending money to do the plans. I mean, the plans for a project like this are probably 300 or 400 grand. That's all the architecture, that's the detailed engineering, that's probably 300,000 or $400,000 that we're spending. We're working with the city to get our plans submitted and approved, and, you know, we want to close the financing as soon as the plans are approved. Could that be under this schedule? Could it be September of 2023? That's probably aggressive, probably more likely November, December of that year, but we would have a closing at that point. All $15 million would be in place, and the proposal to the city is if that closing, let's say between September and December of 2023, you get a cash payment of $450,000, you then make a loan of $250,000, which gets paid at 2% a year over a 20-year period.
Who makes this loan?
We do.
Well, basically, the city. So, we're going to give you a loan?
Of $250,000, yeah. Well, out of the purchase price.
Other $200,000 for roads and environmental, okay, go ahead.
Out of the purchase price. It's not a separate loan. So, the purchase price is 700,000, the cash portion is 450,000, and then the loan portion is 250,000. I want to be really clear about this. The reason that's in there is to score points. We don't need the city's money. That may be an odd way to present that, but we really don't need $250,000 from the city of Bisbee, but if we don't ask for that loan, we don't get five points, and I think we lose.
Ree, just to clarify, it's more like owner- carry?
It's an owner- carry.
We don't actually cut them a check for $250,000.
So, this is where we go to the monthly payment because, okay, you just finished with this because I have a couple of questions inside with him.
2%, it's structured the same way when we borrow money from HUD or from the Arizona Department of Housing. So, it's called a 2% cash flow loan. So, you take 2% of 250,000. That's due every month if the cash flow is there. If the cash flow is not there, it accrues and gets paid later. That's the way these loans are structured. The problem with these deals, you spend $15 million, they have very little cash flow because the rents are so low. I don't know if that, I mean, that's part of the issue. You spend $15 million, you're not making a 6% return on that investment. You're making a very low return because the rents have to stay low for 30 years. So, this financing will get paid at 2% per year if the cash flow is there. Cash flow is not there, it accrues and gets paid later.
The interest continue?
Yes.
But 2% is basically zero. I mean, that's not an inflation number, so basically, we're giving you 250,000 to do this project because 2% is not, doesn't match even inflation. I mean, I'm not talking about now, I know how inflation is high, but 2% is basically not even.
It keeps up with CPI. That's the idea. And the reason why, again, the 2%.
But I just want to be clear on this. We can't just, you know, pat ourselves on the back, we're, now, 1% is going to accrue at 2%. So, just want to clarify this so everyone can hear this. Okay, go ahead, you can finish.
And the 2% comes from the work we do with HUD and with the Arizona Department of Housing. When you borrow money from them, and that's when they actually write you a check for a loan, that's not a seller- carryback or owner- carry, you have two choices. Either their interest rate is 2% or 4%. And I will tell you, that's not been adjusted for the last 25 years I've been doing this. And right now, is that a below-market rate? Absolutely, it's a below-market rate. The one thing I wanted to mention about a project like this, $15 million budget, it may not have any other debt. So, that's why these projects don't get in trouble. Instead of having a high level of debt and a little bit of equity, so you go to buy a house, you make a 20% down payment. So you go to buy a house, you make a 20% down payment, 30% down payment, you borrow 70% or 80%. This is totally different than that. This is almost all cash equity to build this project. With a very, what we think is a small loan from the city of Bisbee at 250,000 dollars. And I will tell you this, if it were a scoring category, we wouldn't structure it this way.
Just please finish the, the lines, yeah.
Well, the other terms, the environmental, one thing to clarify. We said that the city would help pay 100,000 of the remediation, but what we've clarified with your staff, that's only if you get a grant. So if you don't get the grant you're processing, there's no 100,000 dollar contribution toward remediation.
So this will be in the contract?
Yes, we've sent this an email to Steve and Melissa, and it's only if the grant gets awarded. So that clarifies that. The roads, we've asked that the city pave this hillside road to the edge of the site. We don't have a number for that. Under utilities, I'm just talking about the financial parts here. The sewer and water, we believe is connected to the building site and it's adequate. We don't know that yet, we haven't done that kind of.
I thought you had a problem with that.
The, Arizona Water thought they had a problem with that too, but it turned out they didn't. There's a lot more flow pressure.
This was the biggest issue, I remember from the previous owner. He had a problem and that's one of the reasons the building was, was shut off because he did not have adequate water or sewer, I think.
Well, I've gone.
So you say now we have it?
We do have it and I have a letter from the Arizona.
Because if we don't have it, that's going to cost the city a ton of money.
Arizona Water, the, the water, water supply is adequate.
It is, so, okay.
Well, and we'd be comfortable if that ends up being an issue. We're not trying to make that into the city's issue. Again, we just, we don't know at this point. But I understand your point. That that could be a large number.
Yeah, that's why we're here, the council will have to make sure we're making the best deal for the city. And, and because I'm familiar with the water issue. So if they're saying it's okay, then it's okay. If it's not, then we have to make sure.
Point, most cities have sewer and water. We only have sewer, so we don't have a lot of control over water. But so we may want to just grab the water part of it. Just what we'll work on.
Okay. We should look at it that way, Mayor. If it's not your water company, it shouldn't be your responsibility.
Exactly, so we don't have to.
Let's be clear on that, if it's not your water company, that's not your responsibility.
Clear to me before the.
Okay, so let's grab that then.
Use of the property is affordable housing residents. They actually end up being more of a range of 40% to 60% of median income. For Bisbee, for this county, that ends up being households that are 20 to 40,000 dollars a year of income. People who work, and that's what this program is about. Under the term commitment, we're required to keep it affordable for 30 years. That's part of the deed restrictions we have to sign, so the property stays affordable for 30 years. Typically, what's been happening, this program's been around since 1986. And a lot of the properties, when they hit the end of 30 years, they get recapitalized, they become affordable housing again. That's what's been happening. This says the deposit would go hard in August of 2023. That means it becomes non-refundable once we have the award from the state. If we don't get the award from the state, we're not going to go forward. We would want to apply again, that would be up to the city, but we'd like to have the right to apply again. Because we do spend about 100,000 dollars to create these applications, plus our own time. We would have a closing in September, I think that's optimistic. I'd say between September and December. We have to have the building permits in hand to be able to close. That's a, that's one of these non-negotiable requirements.
We might be able to work with you on that.
Yeah, I mean, that is something you can control. If we're doing our part, you can help us with your part typically. We would, the construction takes about 16 months, the lease-up takes about four months. The construction for a building like this used to take 12 months. It doesn't take 12 months anymore, any number of reasons, we could talk about for a long time. The lease-up for a property like this will take four months or less. These properties fill up right away. They're very good places to live and the rents are very low. So that's every point on the term sheet.
Okay, let me go back to the, if you go to the explanation, financial considerations. Under financial consideration, you have, you know, you mentioned that you had attempted to be secured 2,500,000 construction loan via secondary funding that will cover the needs of this project. Successful completion of this bid, we're required to confirm the loan. This funding was secured based on the strong track record of the team, blah, blah. We propose to structure the purchase of the building in three stages. Now, this negates everything we had just spoke about. We will provide 200,000 dollars down payment to the city of Bisbee on the building upon successful completion of the contract. We will pay 400,000 dollars more to the city of Bisbee over two years. That we estimate will take for the project to, to reach profit. Well, can you explain this? It's just, it was confusing to me.
So the terms, the updated terms are what I handed out.
So this, so this has, this is.
That's been updated, we've had a couple of.
So it is negated.
We should focus on this one-page sheet that we just went over.
So this is no longer the case, that's all.
That's for me. I'm sorry, we didn't clarify that before, Steve, Melissa, the best we can talk about.
That's all I have, I'm sticking out.
Okay, all right. Who else wants to floor? Questions? Comments? So, on this 2% per year for 20 years. Where's the flexibility in that? Do they do 10 years with a balloon or is it just a flat 20-year? I, I, I need to know what the actual law is on that.
Well, I had seen, we have to make sure it meets the qualified allocation plan, but I have seen a term of 15 years before. If that became an important factor, as long as we confirm it meets the qualified allocation plan, then we could shorten that to 15 years. What that means, if there's been interest that's not been paid and it's accrued, at that point, the principal gets paid plus any accrued interest.
Right.
But we could shorten that to 15 years if that still meets the Q A P.
That's, my big question is, not casting dispersions, but you always, you know, everybody, but maybe there's wiggle room in that point system that you, I was thinking a 10-year with a five-year balloon or, I mean, there's a lot of creative financing out there. I don't know what the feds allow, but I'm sure we'll check into that.
Well, Mayor, our commitment to the city would be, we can have flexibility on those terms as long as it fits the Q A P and we get the points. What you don't want us to do is agree to something and then we don't get the points and then we.
And then lose the whole bunch. Absolutely, no, I agree, but I'm just bringing up the flexibility part, so. All right.
Mr. Mayor, perhaps I can simplify the question a little bit. Once you've got the point, once you've got the points and you've built a project, five years from now. Can you pay it off?
I don't think that fits the Q A P. Because the idea, the reason you're getting the points is, right or wrong, the policy is you having local government support. Again, right or wrong, that's why that scoring category is there. So for example, Steve, if you had, if a developer had a project without local government support, the, the Q A P ranks that as a less qualified project. That's not meant to offend anybody in a smaller town, but that's.
We're pretty, pretty used to grants requiring a match. This is kind of like our match.
Correct.
If I'm, if I'm reading this correctly.
But your 250,000 is matching what ends up being almost 13 million of equity from the credits.
No, I, I understand, I just, when you were saying.
Just clarifying the question.
It, it, we, we will be flexible as long as the Q A P lets us do that. What I don't want to do, and I've seen this happen, is that we go through the procurement. We've described it in a way that we thought was clear. A D O H is doing their underwriting and they question us. And they say, this is not a, this is not a local government support because after five years, the local government support is over and it's a 30-year project. And that means we would, we would fail.
Do they consider any local government support by, say, waiting building permits or plan reviews or, I mean.
So your city manager asked the exact question.
Building fees.
Fees.
So the answer is, and this is actually an interesting discussion. If the 250,000 was a total commitment from the city and if 25,000 that was building, I don't know if the number is 25,000 for building permit fees. Then the loan amount can be less.
Okay.
It's a total of 250,000 of local government support.
You know, I'm always just finding what I can.
Uh, as do we.
I know. And like you say, you don't really need, necessarily need this, but what we wanted is work out the best procedure. I'm responsible for taxpayers' money, I want to do the best I can for them, but I also want this project to go forward, so I don't want to hurt you, so.
Well, on a $15 million project, we don't need the 250,000. That's, that is not make or break a $15 million project. One, one thing I would ask you to consider, and you, we could help you quantify this. These 33 families are, are going to be paying probably 400 or 500 dollars less per month than they would pay. So you are using taxpayer funds. Again, you're, from the purchase price, you're leaving 250,000 and you're helping 33 families pay less rent for as long as they live here.
But just to this, you're saying you're paying 500 dollars less than what you would be paying? So how much do you expect, what, what do you expect then?
Our rent will be 400, 500, 600 in that range. And I haven't looked at Bisbee market rents for a while, but I'll bet Bisbee market rents are a lot higher than that. Maybe double, I mean, in other markets, these rents are usually about half of the actual market rents.
Reed, refresh my memory, how many points this is worth, the 250? How many points is that worth?
It's five, it's in a category of 15, but it's worth five.
It's worth five, okay. Yeah, the, the, the last board that we entertained did not do this and they lost the points. Well, they didn't really lose it, they just didn't get it.
Every year, it's, it's like grading on a curve, right? So there'll be 30 applications in April, we don't know which 30 will come in. We don't know how many will come in in rural Arizona. So for us, our tracker, we've done 17 of these projects, we've been successfully awarded 17 projects the last 20 years. It's all about the points. Now, when I was younger, I used to try to lobby differently to advocate for our projects. It's a failed approach. This is a procurement that is really based on scoring, which I think you can relate to from where you sit, right? It makes it relatively easy for the government to say, these are the projects that win. And these projects, they're all good projects, they didn't score enough.
The only one, the only time that comes in is when it's a tie.
When it's a tie, it's a little bit weird, there's a tiebreaker formula, which I'm on record on behalf of our industry as not supporting the tiebreaker formulas. To me, if you have two really good, they're all good projects and every, take your pick. If you have two projects that's tied, they should both get funded and there are ways to do that.
I think there's some movement, and I hope your industry is supporting that up at the Capitol, that it will put more towards this, so there will be more awards.
Well, so we helped create a state tax credit, we're going to go back to play the slide shirt. If you have a crystal ball of who the next governor is and what the next House and Senate is going to look like. We'll be able to figure out when's the right time to ask for more funding. Originally, Mayor, we asked the state for a billion dollars for affordable housing, a billion dollars. We got approved with 240 million over time. Again, we will probably at some point, as ministry, ask again for much more funding for affordable housing. It's, I, I don't know any community in Arizona that, that does not have an affordable housing problem.
Yeah, well, you know, as you know, the legislature is supposed to be out doing some Q A, Q and A and, and we also have some influence within the league now and maybe we can also help push that forward at the Capitol, so.
Just another question.
Any support for more funding for, for, more funding for affordable housing? I mean, all this work results in maybe 15 projects a year. It results in maybe 1,200 units a year. The need is so much more.
Yes, okay, when we, we talk about affordable housing, are we talking also about Section 8? Is there something has to do with this? Or basically, the, the reason I'm asking you this, because Bisbee is a tourist town. We have a lot of people that work in the service industry. So they may not qualify for Section 8. So when we talk about affordable, just I want this to be clear for the public as well. So is this, any person can go and, and get this rate? Or, of, of course, it has to be attached to their income. But are you, because I remember when this came about once before and there was some confusion about this. Is it going to be Section 8 or it's going to be just regular affordable housing for anybody? And I mean, can you clarify this?
I'll give you the exact answer.
Yes.
The program, the program is for workers who have household income in Bisbee between about 20,000 a year and 40,000 a year.
Okay.
Right, so that's the program. Now, we do accept residents who have Section 8 vouchers. Section 8 vouchers is a totally different program.
Yeah.
So let's say you had somebody who only makes 12,000 dollars a year. And that person wants to live in this property and they meet all of our other criteria. People are always surprised to hear, we have lots of criteria and we check your rental history and your credit history, even in this, in this band of income levels. Because we don't want people to come live here who struggle, who can't pay the rent. That doesn't, that may sound harsh, but our residents need to pay the rent. So what ends up happening is we accept residents who have Section 8 vouchers. On our properties, that might be about 10% of the total unit count. So that, there'll be 33 apartments here, that could be three or four apartments, but we accept that. A lot of apartment owners don't accept residents that have Section 8 vouchers. I personally think that's an important program to be part of. So it won't be the whole property. The whole property will be covered by the tax credit program and has to be rented to people between 20 and 40,000. And then we will have some people with Section 8 vouchers.
And you'll be balancing, I mean, we'll make sure that's happening.
We don't, I mean, there are other properties where that percentage is higher, those are not our properties. Now, the other group that we accept are veterans with V A S H vouchers. I mean, it's a different voucher program, but we actually think that's another important program to be part of. So not the whole property, but, but we think that's another important piece for us to offer.
Okay. Do you have?
So in your properties, do you have resident managers that live there? And will that happen in this case?
Uh, yes, we do, and I don't know yet about Bisbee. I think for Bisbee, it would make sense to do that. Because our property manager is based in Phoenix and the Urban League is based in Phoenix. So the Urban League will have somebody here once a week, that's how they staff properties like this. Steve and Melissa have met, our partner at the Urban League, Herb Jackson, he's been doing this for 30 years or more as a service provider. The manager is a company called Dunlap and McGee, they've been managing properties for Shaw and Lee for over 20 years. So the, the answer is, we have our, we have a management company. I don't know the answer on if they'll have a resident here, I think that's a really good idea.
That is a concern to the people that live jerkless, it's in my work. And there are people that are concerned that it's not going to be, not for a better word, monitored behaviorally, I guess.
Yeah.
This is easier to put in.
Let me ask that another way. So we get audited every year by the state as well as, by HUD. As well as the investor in these projects tends to be a huge financial institution and they have their own compliance team. So if we fail those audits, we sacrifice, we forfeit the financing, that's how heavy a penalty it is. So if, if, let's say we had, we weren't keeping the property in, in good repair. We would have an annual report that says we are not compliant. We have 30 days to fix those non-compliance. If we don't, the Arizona Department of Housing sends a form to the IRS that says we are no longer in compliance with the tax credits. The IRS sends us a form that says you're forfeiting your tax credits. It's a huge hammer to make sure you keep the standards up. So, and part of why these projects take so much funding at the front end, you have to capitalize everything, thinking about a very long-term goal on a property. So this is different, and again, I've been a developer for a long time. Some of the projects that we build, not in this program, we build and sell. So we have a shorter-term perspective on those. These projects, we have to have a really long-term perspective on because they have to be affordable for 30 years.
Okay, any more questions?
One last one.
Okay, one more.
I promise.
You don't have to promise me, I'm here.
Move along.
I, I know we're doing this for the city of Bisbee for, for housing. What are your policies on people that come from outside the city and want to rent, want to take advantage of this situation? What, what do we do in this case? I mean, we're doing it for the people that live here, someone from Sierra Vista, oh, it's a great price, I can live here, drive to work in Sierra Vista, I'm going to pay 560. What is, how are we going to ensure, is there a policy or can we implement a policy? Just.
Well, so we have, under the Fair Housing Laws, we have to be open to anyone who comes, broadly stated, right? But we can create marketing programs for local residents, we've done that before. And that would require working with the city, working with your Chamber of Commerce, I mean, there are ways to do that effectively. And that usually solves it if you're really working in advance, plus, as I said before. Plus, as I said before, people tend to live in these properties for a long time, so there's not much turnover. So the key would be the initial lease-up, to work with the city, Chamber of Commerce, et cetera, to really create marketing for local residents.
Thank you.
You gave me a lot of time, Mayor, I appreciate it very much.
I thank you very much. So I'm gonna, we will skip over item number two, and on to item three. And I guess my only question on this, any new information about La Frontera? Is there anything else you want to introduce to us, or, at this point, if not, that's fine.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask Melissa to relate in broad terms the communication that she received from La Frontera with whom we are under contract
Yes.
at present time. And then, with specific regard to the terms of the amendment, I'm going to ask Mr. Estes to go over that with you.
Okay. Okay. So, within an hour yesterday, we had one dropout, and I got a phone call from La Frontera wanting me to speak with all of, with Dan and the executive team to say that they were looking at reconsidering and bidding again. Along with that, they were asking quite a few questions. They, they had seen an article in the Sierra Vista paper that we were applying for an EPA grant, and that it was directed at Hillcrest. So that is, I believe, one of the reasons that all of a sudden, a reapplication became much more appealing to them. Because that grant could be up to 500,000 dollars, and that's a half a million that they're not going to need to put in once we receive it. So, you know, I did.
Quickly, for clarification, that's for asbestos and.
Misnecessary.
Everybody knew that.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, I know, I didn't know. That's the one we approved at the last council meeting.
Yeah, remediation.
Oh, okay.
And I actually met at the site today and did with Dave Laney from Stan Tech. And we walked through, we had good attendance, we had three contractors come all the way from Phoenix down to look at the building, and their bids are due next week, the 14th, I believe. So, to get back to La Frontera, I had them all on, on the phone, and really, they were just asking a lot of questions. And I happened to have the Second Amendment with me while I was speaking with them, and trying to clarify, in our, they, they believe they still, and they may, and Joe will clarify that, they have until November 30th to make a decision as a group whether or not they are going to resubmit a tax credit. I believe in this last year, we have made the property much more appealing to someone for tax credits. So, one of the things should we, really what we discussed is how quickly they would be making a decision. Their answer was, not until the due date. So, they said, and I quote, "We think we're back in." I don't know what else to tell you.
That's fine.
And we will be doing a call with Mr. Pock and.
Well, that's why we leave it up to you, and I just wanted to bring all, I heard that.
Yeah, it was, it was a crazy afternoon.
So I just wanted to bring everybody else up here to see, and one reason we'll, you know, we'll hang in there for a minute more before, because I don't think there's going to be a decision tonight, I would not recommend it.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
Mayor, I just want to point out the, the one key provision of the Second Amendment to the, to the agreement with La Frontera is it says, "Not withstanding, notwithstanding any provisions, to the contrary, sellers shall nonetheless have the right to market the property for sale to other parties through and including November 30th, 2022." That's what the November 30th date is. "In the event seller consummates a sale to a third party by November 30th, 2022, the original agreement as amended by this First Amendment, by the First Amendment and Second Amendment shall terminate." So if we have an agreement in place, a signed agreement
By.
by November 30th. So that's the date that you have to keep in mind, with regard to having any, any other alternative sale agreement in place.
And if we don't by the 30th, then where do they, how would, then they have the chance to rebid? Or they now feel they don't, they have the first right of.
Then the agreement continues, and they have the ability to resubmit. And their due diligence period was extended until June of 2023 to allow for that.
So basically, what happens is, if we don't make a decision by the 30th, it automatically goes to, back to.
Right, because there's, there's essentially two, two provisions of that Second Amendment. The first one is, is that Section 5 of the original amendment's amended to provide the feasibility study, or feasibility period is extended to Friday, June 30th, 2023. That allowed them to have up until June to have that option to resubmit in April, and then find out if they get the credits in June, and then have that month of June to make that final determination. And then also the provision to be able to, knowing that, you know, the city wanted to be able to sell that property, to go out and remarket it, and if it's, if the city enters into an agreement to sell the property prior to November 30th, then the agreement with La Frontera terminates.
So, if you give me a minute, I, I think what my suggestion is to the council, because no decision tonight, but that we direct staff to go back and, you know, talk to both sides. I mean, they may not be willing to do anything before November 30th, and that's the right, La Frontera. But I think that, you know, if there needs to be revision, maybe the other side can work it out. And then we will hold a meeting before the 30th, and we.
Make a decision.
We have to, yeah. So, we either we go, or we revert back to one month, so, does that make?
Yeah. Mayor, my man, we appreciate your process. And I, again, I, it may be a little awkward, that's okay. We appreciate your process and the agreements you have, and we're happy to compete. And we'll be happy to talk to your staff about areas where we might be able to be flexible.
Great, so that's, that's all I'm asking for, and I'm just trying to kind of set up the scenarios here so that we know that Thanksgiving will be a good Thanksgiving.
Mr. Mayor, we will endeavor to see if we can wrap it up sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
I think we'll probably, can't speak for the rest of this week, but certainly next week, be able to engage in whatever conversations need to be made in preparation for the council meeting on the 18th. And if we're ready, we'll let you know we'll be ready.
Thank you. I think that's, anybody else have any other?
Just stick that quarter out, that's all.
I will, I will.
From that agreement, yes.
I will ask for a motion to adjourn. All those in favor to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose nay. The ayes have it, we are adjourned until 7:00 PM for regular session.